...cubs on the, on the table here. Yeah, we grab one and go back.
Okay.
Oh, you washed what?
Good morning. Welcome to two thousand seventeen. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Let's start with the roll call, please.
Gong.
Here.
Millies.
Here.
Elliot is absent. Diaz.
Here.
Whitlatch.
Here.
Itigneano.
Here.
Aguilar.
Here. It's time let's do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented, under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the chair. Note, in order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony on public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for public hearing. At all times, please use, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. This time we will, um, we have the approval of December fourteen, two thousand sixteen minutes.
Uh, public comment, if you allow, public comment that's here for any items not on the agenda.
Are there any public comments? Hearing none will continue. I don't think we've ever had one. Oh yeah, we did ones, yeah. Alright, uh, so now we'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes for the December fourteenth, two thousand sixteen.
I'll make the motion to approve December fourteenth, two thousand, two thousand sixteen minutes.
I second that.
Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Itigneano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes. Okay, uh, now we go on to the parcel map hearings. All actions on all parcel maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing, unless anyone wishing to discuss any one of these items requests that it be pulled for separate public hearing. No staff presentation will be given on any items unless requested. In any case, there will be a separate vote on these items. Item A is tentative parcel map number PPM sixteen dash zero two six. B, tentative parcel map number PPM sixteen zero thirty-eight. C, tentative parcel map number PPM sixteen zero thirty-five, and final site plan number PSR sixteen zero, zero seven. Does anyone wish to pull any of those items? If not, then we will open the public hearing for these items. No questions? Then we will continue with the vote, with the approval of these, uh, one at a time. We'll start with item number eight.
Go ahead and make that motion. We approve category exemption and consistent with the California Environment Quality Act and the State SEQA guideline pursuant to Title fourteen California Code Regulation, Section one five three oh three, Class three pertaining to construction and location of limited numbers of new small structures and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM sixteen dash zero two six, final map waiver and, and exemptions.
I'll second the motion.
Well, any discussion, vote?
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Itigneano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes. Item B.
I.
Go ahead. I make a motion to approve categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the State SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title fourteen CAL Code Regulation, Section one five three oh three, Class three pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM one six oh three eight with the requirement to file a final map.
Second that. Any discussion? Vote?
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Itigneano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes. Final one is item C.
I'm being quiet today.
Go ahead and make a motion. We approve category exemption consistent with the California Environment Quality Act, SEQA, and the State SEQA guideline pursuant to the Title fourteen California Code Regulation, Section one five three oh three, Class three pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approved tentative parcel map number PPM sixteen dash zero three five, and final site plan number PSR sixteen dash zero zero seven, and waiver of the final map.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? Have a vote?
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Itigneano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes. This time we will close. We'll, we'll move on to the, uh, public hearings. Item A, setbacks variance number PSV sixteen dash zero zero one. Dave Paratus Sierra Lodge, L E Britton Construction, Inc. Attention Gary Whitney. This is a categorical exemption and setback variance to allow the construction of a permanent structure, retaining wall, water storage, and treatment system within the fifty-foot building line setback area and the county right-of-way of Sunset Drive. A county-maintained road on a one-point-five-two-acre parcel in the RA forty-three rural residential forty-three thousand square foot minimum zone. The site is located on the north side of State Highway one ninety-eight, approximately, uh, two thousand three hundred feet west of Dineley Drive in the community of Three Rivers. And our contact today is Dana Metlin.
Good morning, thank you. This is a setback variance. Sixteen dash zero zero one. And it is categorically exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section one five three zero five, Class five pertaining to minor alterations to land use limitations such as lotline adjustments and variances. And the project is consistent with, uh, these requirements. Entitlement is found in Section seven nineteen twelve fifteen. The building line setback ordinance, which states that a variance may be granted if said granting is in harmony with the general purpose and intent, and so that the spirit of the ordinance shall be observed, public safety and welfare served, and substantial justice done. In order for this variance to be approved, a finding needs to be made supporting practical difficulties, unnecessary hardships, or results inconsistent with the general purpose of this article. That would result to the strict and literal interpretation and enforcement of this article with respect to the proposed improvements. And the factors that support this finding are, uh, first, the water system at Sierra Lodge is antiquated and no longer meets the current requirements of the state of California clean water standards. The current water storage for the property is located on the north side of the building, and all of the underground plumbing and electrical is located there as well. This is the only area on the property with available space to install the new equipment that will be required in order to upgrade the water system. Sunset Drive is a very short county-maintained road that has very light residential traffic. The lodge, as well as the two residences that border Sunset Drive, do not meet any of the current setback requirements for construction. The existing retaining wall that is located on the north side is thirty-one and a half feet from the center line of Sunset Drive, which is already within the setback, building line setback area. And the new retaining wall would be eighteen point five feet from the center line, which is outside of the, uh, currently paved road. If the setback variance is not approved, the water system would not be upgraded, and then the lodge would no longer be able to meet the new state standards. In addition, the lodge and existing residences all have structures built prior to nineteen seventy and which are located within that fifty-foot building line setback area. Uh, this project was noticed according to the law, and staff did receive several phone calls from local property owners regarding this project. But, uh, once it was explained what the project was, they all, uh, were satisfied with the description of the project. As mentioned, uh, the project is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of State Highway one ninety-eight and Sunset Drive, which is in Three Rivers. And this is the site. The existing zoning is a rural residential, one acre minimum zone, and all of the surrounding properties are zoned similarly and have res- uh, residential uses on them. This is an aerial photograph of the site. This is the site plan. These are the existing tanks on the site that, uh, purify the water currently. This is the proposed area for the new tanks. And this would be the new retaining wall. And this is the, uh, roadway down here. The setback variance is being requested in order to construct a retaining wall and a water filtration system with the fifty, within the fifty-foot building line setback and within the county right-of-way of Sunset Drive. The retaining wall would be constructed eighteen and a half feet from the center line of the right-of-way, and the new water filtration system would be behind the wall. Applicant has received a violation of the Surface Water Treatment Rule from the State Water Resources Control Board, indicating that the facility is in violation of the California Health and Safety Code pertaining to public water systems. The Sierra Lodge is in the process of preparing a corrective action plan, identifying improvements to the water system. And the plan requires that the equipment needed to perform this corrective action be placed within the fifty-foot building line setback of Sunset Drive. Approval of this setback variance would not set a new precedence, as is evidenced in the motel's history of having been granted five previous variances. In addition, county engineering submitted correspondence which established their agreement with the variance as long as it was outside the paved area of Sunset Drive, which is approximately eight and a half feet from the center line, and the equipment being ten feet from the edge of the pavement. This is an aerial photo. And the existing tanks are right here, these two white circles. This is a view from Sunset Drive, existing tanks, and the proposed tanks will be placed in this area in front with a retaining wall protecting them from...
Dana, they're already in the fifty-foot setback as they're sitting.
Yes, these are already within the fifty-foot building line setback.
Tell me about the traffic on that sunset again.
I think there's five residences. And, you know, very light traffic. They, the applicant, uh, would consider a road vacation, vacating of this roadway uh, if this variance was not approved. And because they need the system to be pla- to be placed in this area.
So, excuse me Dana, so they will be, go back to that picture. They will be leaving those tanks up and adding two more down below them?
I believe so. Yes.
And another wall?
And another retaining wall in front of that. Uh, staff is recommending that you approve the categorical exemption and conditionally approve the setback variance under PSV sixteen dash zero zero one.
The residents indicated that they would like the county, uh, to abandon the road?
They have not. They, the applicant has not pursued that direction. I do think there's only about five houses back there.
Now, this is the one as you go up one ninety-eight, it kinda sits up. Per, go around that curve, the hotel, right?
I think so.
It's up high.
Applicant may be able to...
When we open the testimony, I'll, uh, when we open the testimony.
When we open the public hearing, yes.
Been there for years.
It has. And as mentioned, they had five previous, uh, variances approved for a previous work that has been done in the setback of Sunset Drive.
Any other questions of Dana? At this time, we will open the, um, public hearing. If anybody would like to, uh, testify either in favor or... Please state your name and address.
I'm Gary Whitney, L E Britton Construction. And, um, I didn't, don't really have anything to add, just if you had further questions, I'd...
You have a question?
Glad to elaborate.
Yeah, this is, uh, as you go, uh, up one ninety-eight, and you come around a bend, this hotel sits, hotel motel, kinda sits up high, right?
Correct, it, it was, well, the old white horse. You go past the old white horse in, and then you go up a little hill, and then it sits at the top of the hill on the left-hand side of one ninety-eight. And it was, uh, built about nineteen fifty-four, nineteen fifty-six. The old, the Sunset Drive used to be the Old Mineral King Highway. So, um, when the state built Highway one ninety-eight, uh, the Old Mineral King Highway was given to Tulare County to serve as a county road. So, the, uh, the width, it, it doesn't really meet any of today's county standards for roadway. It's very narrow, it's very short at dead ends. If you go past the, the motel, down the road, uh, several of the buildings farther down the road are actually closer to center line of the road than what we're proposing to do. And also, um, if you go back to the, the site drawing... If you, if, well, that picture...
That what you want?
That, well, that picture really showed it. Um, one, one more. Okay, you see in the bottom center of the picture, the corner of the retaining wall, just below the shrub? No doubt, yeah, keep coming down, right there. Um, that's actually, uh, two or three feet from the edge of the county road. And that was part of the, one of the other variances that was already approved. And so that kinda gives you an idea of the traffic back there. There's a few homes down along the river. It's, it's not a major, major traffic area. The road in itself, uh, doesn't constitute high rates of speed. It's, it's not in great, uh, great condition. But that's what we're faced with. Um, he's got to improve his water system. There physically is no other place on the property, um, to, uh, install this system that would, would be both productive for the motel and economically feasible.
Are you going to put a retaining wall in and bring it up to the same height as the other tanks?
Is that... No.
No?
About the, uh, center of that vehicle, um, the wall is going to come out towards the county road, towards Sunset, thirteen and a half feet. And then it's going to parallel the existing wall, and we'll tie in about the oak tree that you see on the, uh, right-hand side there. And that, it's kinda hard to tell with the photo, but that parking lot is sloped. And so, basically, the wall would be, um, almost pavement-grade back by the, by the, uh, vehicle, and will be about thirty inches tall when it gets over here to the tree. The tanks, the, we're installing a slow sand filter, and a portion, the, the existing tanks will be the collection of sedimentary tanks for the water coming, it's off of a river well. We'll come up to those tanks, and then by way of gravity, the water will feed into the slow sand filters. Um, that will purify the water. And then as it goes through the sand filters, it goes into a collection tank. Uh, once that collection tank fills up, then another pump will, um, send the water to the storage tanks where it'll be chlorinated, um, and then, and then go to the buildings. But per the, um, design requirements, uh, we're required to add an additional ten thousand gallons of storage, of water storage. And so we're doing that, um, because of our, uh, uh, area restrictions, we're, we're doing that with three tanks that'll be smaller in size, so we don't encroach farther out towards Sunset. They'll be in a, in a line along there. And the, the retaining wall is basically to help us level the ground and to protect the, the tanks from any potential, uh, vehicle collisions. Uh, we don't wanna rupture one of those, those tanks, so, um... But, uh, you know, th- this rock that you see in front where the retaining wall is, that protrudes, that, that's, also helps protect what we're going to do. There's no way a vehicle could drive into it coming from a, a westerly direction. And, uh, it actually, we gain more space to the east. Uh, it kinda widens out as, as you're going back towards Highway one.
Good enough for me.
Yep.
This looks like a hardship variance to me. I mean, there's just not much to do.
Thank you. Any other testimony? Other questions of the commission?
Well, I have a confession. It's been, I don't, I don't remember the facts about it, but I think about twenty-five years ago, I handled a note and deed of trust on that property. That's all I remember. I don't remember who the parties were or anything, but I don't think that's a problem.
That's not a problem.
Probably far enough back.
Probably.
To divest yourself of that problem.
You know, this is how, what happens when we have such old planning.
That's true. I confess, being almost as old as Wayne.
Alright, uh, so we'll go ahead and, uh, close the public hearing. And, uh, entertain a motion to approve.
If I can read this, I'll make a, a motion that we approve a categorical exemption consisting, uh, consistent with, uh, SEQA and State SEQA guidelines, uh, pursuant to Title fourteen and pertaining to minor alterations, uh, to land, uh, use limitations and conditionally approved setback variance, PSV sixteen dash zero zero one.
I second that.
Another discussion? Or vote, please?
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Itigneano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And that concludes our public hearing portion. So now we're on to, uh, Director's Report.
Thank you. Yesterday at the board, the new supervisors were sworn in, Amy Shucklian, representing, um, Visalia area, and Kyler Cocker taking over for Sheeda's, uh, former district. So that went well yesterday. I was hoping Reed would be here, but I think he's probably still busy, um, dealing with the floods. I don't know, uh, if Craig, are you familiar with some of the activities right now going on? Cause I was hoping to give an update about some of the, the storm conditions and... We, we, no one ever tells him anything. Yeah, it's probably cause Reed's busy dealing with, he's been out, the, the, the Public Works Department's been doing a fantastic job through all of these, uh, storm events, uh, keeping, uh, the department heads and the different agencies informed of, of as, uh, conditions merit and what's being done. And, and they've been going from, uh, incident to incident. Nothing major has, has occurred. They've, they've had some, uh, dramatic rises in, in the levels of some of the flows. Deer Creek, I believe, is, uh, all the way out to pass Highway forty-three now, flowing. But we've been lucky in that the timing of these events, it's, it's just, stays with us long enough to get drenched for a while, and then it moved on, so it had a little bit of time to recover. So, the, the, the levels of the rivers ro- rose quite a bit, but then they were able to, uh, recess a little bit before the next event came in. So we've been, so far, we've been very, uh, lucky on the timing, not, not like, uh, it's been occurring up north.
What about, uh, White River? That's the one that caused the problem for...
Well, White River's out there as well. You know, I, on, uh, Monday morning, we had a, uh, a groundbreaking for Early Mart, um, uh, Park. And on the way back, I took a little drive to actually see a su- a couple of the projects, to drive past a couple of projects that your planning commission had approved previously, the wrecking yard outside of Early Mart and, and all that. Went across the river, there's, there's a flow, there's a flow out there. Uh, I didn't go out as far west, but there was a significant flow, um, there, just a little bit, uh, west of ninety-nine. So, yeah, it was moving, but there wasn't any problems. There's, 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 you know, situational areas where there's puddling and flooding by the roadsides, but, um, nothing, nothing significant, fortunately. Our, uh, a- as we discussed earlier, I'd like this year to be able to bring some presentations to the Planning Commission. Uh, since, since we're not going to hold the, um, first meeting in February because of the farm show, the second meeting, I've, I've tentatively scheduled, uh, some people from Building and Housing to come and talk about our employee housing program. We, we just, uh, were graded from the state, uh, and we, well, they've changed their grading. It's a pass fail, so we've passed. In the, in, in, previously, there had been things, you need to work on this, you need to do that. We've really turned it around, the, the employee housing inspections and all of that. So, we're getting kudos from the state. And we're the largest jurisdiction by far within the state. The state's only, only entity that's doing more than we are. So, so you take all of the other jurisdictions combined, and we're larger than that. So, we're doing really good on that, so I was gonna have a small presentation on that, bring our, uh, inspector that's in charge of that program, as well as some of the other staff members, do a very brief PowerPoint and, and show a little picture, a few pictures, and, and, and talk a little bit about the program, and be able to answer any questions you might have. So I'd like to do that, we'll start with that one in the second meeting in February, or well, it'll be our only meeting in February. And then, um, throughout the year, continue with, with, with some presentations like that to, to keep your planning commission informed on, on the different areas that, uh, RMA is, is working on, so... I think that's really, oh, uh, the next Planning Commission meeting, uh, we will be bringing forward, uh, a tribal housing project, PUD, uh, for twenty-seven, uh, units down in the East Porterville area. This has been, we've worked closely with the tribe, as well as the city of Porterville, to get their input, so we've really collaborated on that. And I believe we have, uh, the conditions of approval that, that are acceptable to all the parties, the city, the, the, the county, as well as the, um, tribe. So, we'll be bringing that forward, uh, at the next meeting here. Do you have any other?
No, I don't have anything to add.
What?
Oh, I'm gonna take it offline. I'm gonna take it offline. Tell me more about it.
I don't want to do it.
Okay.
Okay, Hector Garrett, Chief of Environmental Plan. Just want to update the commission that yesterday, the board of supervisors approved and certified a final EIR for the Plainview wastewater system project. That's supposed to four hundred thousand dollars to do a feasibility study and environmental to possibly connect Plainview from its independent septic, individual septic system to a wastewater collection system and send it to the city of Lindsay's wastewater treatment plant. So, that was approved yesterday by the board, and we've just initiated work on a similar project for the Metheny Track, which, that will go, the flows would go to the city of Ridley, I mean Ridley, Tulare. But, I can't remember, that is so weird. Really, it's a part of different planning. So, that was just initiated, but these are the public benefit projects really take great pride in, in that we're able to try to do these things, and hopefully we'll get additional funding so those projects can be realized over time. The Deer Creek was a perfect timing, and that, I believe, the bridge was dedicated in May, and it used to be a relatively short span, well, now the, the new guy's like four hundred feet in length, so it's not going anywhere, and it withstood the flood, apparently, so that's, that was, that's, just shows, you know, like, how well that's working for Public Works to go ahead and have the projects, again, another public benefit project of a bridge that had been washed out at the last event, so...
On the Plainview project, is Lindsay's system connected with Strathmore?
No, no, Strathmore has its own.
Is Strathmore a lot closer than Lindsay?
Strathmore, well, what you do when you look at the alternatives, who could accommodate, Strathmore couldn't accommodate them, they just don't have the capacity. Ridley does, Ridley, I mean Ridley, did it again. Lindsay has a lot. Strathmore, they looked at Strathmore Woodville and Woodville Labor Camp, and they just, they don't have the capacity. So, they have to go, yeah, about seven miles north versus...
And, and this is just the environmental, so we have it ready to go if funding comes available, and if the city is acceptable to all the, the agreements that would be required for hooking it into, into their wastewater treatment.
Right, there's still more work that has to be done, but it's nice to know that it's, it's virtually a shovel-ready project.
Which makes us more competitive for grants, because if you've got environmental and you're ready to move forward on something, grant funders like projects that will actually get built. So, now we're in a position, it's one of the reasons why we do our complete streets with thirty percent design on a number of projects, when we go after grant applications, if we've already got it partially designed, and if their SEQA's already been taken care of on it, it's much more attractive to the funders, because they want to see projects that actually get built and completed. Therefore, in a competitive stance against other grant applicants, we're ready to go, and, and that makes it a much more positive application process.
It also related to flood control because of our recent rain events at Cottonwood Creek at the juvenile detention facility. Last year, we had, Public Works had constructed a four-foot-tall berm running pretty much the length of the whole juvenile detention facility, while when Cottonwood was flooding, or, I guess, accommodating water, if that berm was there, some of the water, not a lot, but some of the water would have gone to the juvenile detention facility, but it was such a design that it's the south part of the creek, and then as it crested, it went north, like, where we have more county lands, so they know some would have come, they don't know how much, but that's how these things work. So, we had done an EIR for that one, and I believe there's another funding source where, because we have an EIR, they're able to approve, I think, another million dollars to do something flood control in that area. So, it's all coming together little by little, and, and you contract with the department to believe it is going to rain sometime, and when it happens, the forties are the best time to do these things. That's it.
No one else? This has to be record time.
Just brought, brought with you a new gavel and efficiency, right?
This is Pete Vanderpoel here. Since I coached him in soccer, I could use it. All right, so I guess...
Wait, we got one more, we got a...
You had your chance.
No, we're done then? No, I need a little, I need a couple of minutes in. Wanted just to update and report on the TCPAC, that'd be the California Planning Commission meeting that we're having here, it's going to be on April, Friday, April twenty-first, I believe. Twentieth and twenty-first, is that Friday and, Friday and Saturday? And, so I'm still needing some help, and you guys are all on my committee, I don't know if you knew that, but you, you are. I've secured one speaker, I've got the Tulare County Ag Commissioner to come and speak as one speaker, and also provide annual report book, booklet on our, on the crop returns and stuff for all the, for the people there. I've secured a tour out at Rob Hilarde's dairy, near Lindsay, between Lindsay and Tulare, and Bill's working on rooms, and a block of rooms, and some, here it's going to be in Visalia, we want it so that they can come in and have time in the evenings to walk downtown and see what we've got downtown. So, we'd like to have it downtown and make it easy for them in that sense of the deal there. Still working on a couple of more speakers, so I'm open to, if you guys, I'd like to have a water person come in. I'm thinking, Dan Dooley is a good friend of mine, Dan's pretty, pretty good on water, that might be good. And, so we, maybe one or two other people, and then, let's see, who was it gonna, we were going to take a look at going to the dam, because I know John wanted to go up to Three Rivers for lunch or something over there, he wanted to show his, his community off, so we might do something like that. And then, I wanted to kind of keep the mileage, the time in the bus down to, not as much as we did there. When we were down at Riverside, it was a long, long bus trip, and it was more than most people can tolerate at one, one time, so we'll keep it down. But, we're still looking for a couple of more tours, to do tour sites, and I'm open to that, and so, need to get a bus lined up, I don't have, haven't done anything in that area yet. What, any, any, Billy, you got any, am I missing here? There's still, all the, these are the, the...
I'm going to let you sink, man. We're here for you, so...
On the bus, have you spoken to Classic Charter?
I haven't talked to anybody yet, no, I haven't had a chance, so I'm going to, does anybody have contact with Classic? All right, you're, you're assigned that job.
April...
Be Saturday, we won't need it Friday, but Saturday would be the bus Saturday morning, and it'd be all, pretty much all day.
How many people?
Not more than a busload, but probably prepare for fifty, and that's on the high side, but I don't know, what do you guys think? Fifty, if we prepare for fifty, we'll be okay.
So, right now, one of my tenants is doing the repair work on the dam, so I will call him and find out what the protocol is. Have any of you ever been in the, down into the dam?
I, I haven't ever done it, but my son, with his architectural group out of Redwood, took a tour, I think last spring, and, and had a tour of the facilities.
Was it elderly, elderly friendly, or?
They enjoyed their time, I, I don't know, I wasn't, I didn't participate, but I know that he...
No ladders to climb down, or?
Like, the Coe Adelta Conservation folks, I mean, they, they've got, that, that actually, in their facility there on, on the exit?
Right.
They've got lots of history on that dam.
That would be a great place to stop off before...
Nice stop there, maybe we do a stop, then get some, get some preview and some history, and then take them up and actually show the, the, the facilities. I wanted to see those, those tip, those tip deals, what do they call those? Yes, uh-huh.
Soapy mulholland and Scott Spear.
Right.
They're all involved in that.
And the good news is, we might have some water in the lake this year to show them.
We have a lot.
Should be full.
So, so anyway, that's the latest update, it's coming fast, so we need to start pulling this together. I know John's going to be a big help, he's told me he's going to, because since he's done this several times, he's going to help get the details and tie up, tie everything together, but that's the, the, so far, the development, what we've got, and we've got a little ways to go yet.
Okay.
It goes your record time, Gil.
Thanks to you.
Yeah, thanks.
Now, I guess we can, anybody else? Now we can adjourn. Pete Vanderpoel's gavel.
Thank you, Gil, great meeting.